So we got 1.1, the feeding's been called to order at 6:32. Uh, we met for a brief executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and compensation agreement, information that is on your agenda tonight. Would everyone please stand to look flag?
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheila, would you please take your call?
Vanessa Bidwell.
Here.
Danielle Reed.
Here.
Marilyn Erickson.
Here.
Kristy Bennett.
Here.
Kelly Faribault.
Here.
Sheila Gusto, here. Garrett Hornum.
Here.
David Sullivan.
Right here.
Okay, quorum is present. 1.4, board approval is requested on the meeting agenda as presented with specific stated additions or amendments of any, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, in discussion, I will let everyone know on 3.1, um, there's a typo. So in your margin where it says policies first reading, that should actually say second reading, but it does say second in the body of the, uh, topic. Any other? Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries. 1.5, public comments will be heard regarding agenda items that require official action or deliberation, other comments will be heard at the end of the meeting. Each person speaking to the board shall state their name and group affiliation if appropriate, municipality of residence, if a taxpayer, and agenda items she or he wishes to discuss. All statements shall be directed to the president, no public participant may address or question individual board members per policy 903. The public have any questions on the agenda or comments?
Valerie Gabbersack, South Mountain Road, Ship and Township. Um, I'd like to know what the life expectancy is on the HVAC system that they're going to be installing?
That they will be installing?
That you're voting on tonight.
So the typical, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, Eric is sitting in the audience, it is 25 to 30 years.
So we'll need to repeat this cost in 25 to 30 years?
Possibly, yes.
So we'll save 800,000, I believe it was, over 20 years? We'll spend 11.2 million, and then in 25 years, we'll have to spend another 10 million?
I can't answer what we'll have to spend at that point.
Roughly, basically.
All I can tell you is there's a possibility that the HVAC system will need, will need to look at this again as other schools in this area or schools in general need to do the same thing.
Add another, if anybody else has any questions? At another meeting you stated that, um, the school, somebody had mentioned that the school is in a financial position right now to do this project in a good place, right? Do you consider 3 million dollars in debt a good place to be borrowing another 11 million? Because currently there's a bond that's not paid off that still has a balance of 3 million?
Right.
So now we're gonna add to that?
We had our bond person come here and present to us, she's here as well. Um, she can answer to that and why we are in a good financial position.
But we have 3 million dollars worth of debt.
It will be paid off in three years' time, yes, that one will be.
But we're still 3 million dollars in debt as you're making this 11 million dollars a year?
Correct.
Okay. Is it logical to spend more on a project to upgrade than the whole property of both schools is worth?
I can't sit here and say what the assessment value of this property is.
Well, in the eighties, it was 4.7 million for all of the properties. Here's they said it's like 11 million something now, it certainly didn't triple over these past 30 years, because your home didn't, my home didn't, I don't think anybody's house has tripled in value.
No, but we still have upkeep to do to our homes.
Well, yeah, you're upkeep, upkeep.
Regardless of what they're valued at.
Right, but not that, you're not gonna put a hundred thousand dollars into a heater for a 50,000 dollar house. I'm just saying we need to live within our means, you know, HVAC system's a luxury. Keep the place heated and cooled, you could buy.
It's a luxury when?
It is a luxury to have central air, because if my heater breaks at home.
The whole building, we don't have central air here, there are certain areas that do.
Okay, but you're doing heating and cooling and ventilation, everything, right? Is that not what an HVAC is?
Yes, it is, but the majority of the building will be heating only.
Oh, so this system that they're doing isn't even for the whole building, or what? What's going, what's, where? Okay, what's gonna be air conditioned and what's not gonna be?
Large areas will be air conditioned, that would be like your, your gym, your auditorium, your library, the, where there will be a lot of people congregating in one area.
Okay, so I think that's even worse than that you're not even getting the full school conditioned for 11 million dollars. One final thing, are you all aware that McClure was stressed with the water savings project that did not result in the savings, leaving the school at a loss? For the money and maintenance having to change everything back to pre-Mclure condition?
What water savings project?
Where that Marilyn knows about it, something about with the flushing and stuff like that?
Yeah.
It was quite a few boards ago, Paula Brettis mentioned it.
I wasn't on the board, I have to.
I wasn't on the board, I was the pilot.
Okay, well, despite that, I mean, I ask that you postpone the vote and find out and educate yourself about this, at least, because you're entering into a contract with somebody who has already let the school down once. And you're blindly entering into it if you choose not to check into it first. This same project that you're voting on tonight was presented several boards ago as well. And denied because they realized that they could handle it in-house for considerably less.
Thank you.
That's all, yeah.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, my name's David Smith, I'm from Ford Township. I've had my own businesses since I graduated college, 10 years ago I had. I want to share with you what I share, I have six children also. I want to share with you what I share with my kids, and my kids, they're complaining about money. So next time you go digging in your pocket to buy something, ask yourself, do I really need this? So nine times out of 10, you answer, no. That's how I stay in line. Is that being said? I agree, a lot of things might need to be done here. But I also listen, they were standing up, both last blocks, we all went down the blocks and we were bad. In a neither place, in my opinion, no. The duct work is still ducting, the lights are still illuminating, everyone was here, switch LED bulbs, we had our outlets, you didn't see them though, go down. The heating issues, yeah, I lived in the last 20, 30 years, so that's an obvious suspension over four. That's the contractor, but the LEDs, they're balanced, they can be swapped out on site. You know, I don't think the duct work might not be efficient, but it's still functional. Do you really need this, before you vote on it, it's relentless, and you really, need it, is it necessary? Because our task base is implemented, I see it, you see it. It's an incredible chunk of money.
Just, just so you're aware, the duct work is only being replaced where it's necessary, correct?
Well, I just.
Right, I'm just letting everyone know that.
It's pretty hard all the time, I don't imagine.
All the duct work is being replaced.
And I know, I know, but I haven't put stuff on there. That being said, I like that whole, it's all about fine. Is the heat fresh, no, it's bad, we don't hear more joint, it's going to be a full break. It isn't necessary right now, it's changing, it's like, so, basically, one day, that's why everyone's like, such a huge, more, we can't find 11 million, we ask for a big place. And one more thing I want to touch on before I sit down is, with everything dwindling here, kind of touched on this before, all these kids can gain this one building, no other school. Launch was an issue, we already proved lunch can be taken care of, for half our bricks, that's cool, we committed that. And we're at the high school auditorium. That's something to think about, because back when you were in school, 9 years ago, where I like to admit, there were a lot of kids per teacher. Is that fair to the teacher? No, like 8, 10, 12 kids per teacher? I'm sorry, that's not how, that's, that's not, should have been my opinion, you spend a lot of money and I don't like it for.
I will.
You just have to want to figure it out, I don't think you want to, I don't blame you, I wouldn't want to be sitting there either, but I have to say what I'm saying, so I can say.
Thank you.
Again, for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Asen, I just have some quick questions. Um, it's mostly on the funding, this is obviously a lot of money. Have you looked into grant funding? Okay, um, can you tell me what grant funding you've been to?
McClure will be also doing grants, the thing of it is, the grants cannot be applied for until the entire scope of work is decided upon and a contract is signed.
So there isn't like an entire ready to go plan for you?
No, and so this project needs about 11 months to plan out anyway. So once we have that scope figured out and we've decided on what we want to do, we can then go look for grants before the work ever starts. We can take the bond money out ahead of time and invest it and grow it to help offset the payments while we're working through the scope of the work and waiting for the work to be done, but as this project goes on, grants will be looked at along the way, it won't be a one and done thing. There will also be, we will look, McClure will help look for tax incentives, because it is an energy, guaranteed energy savings project from the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act that was developed in what, 2002 or something?
I, I believe you have to have that as a scope of the project, you submit it to the IRS before you, before you actually start the project.
Correct.
So that, they're gonna want a whole scope of things before, just like a grant's coming too, right? So just slide that in there so you know that.
Yeah, they're, they're all aware of that, they've done this many times, and Rana's very good about finding grants for us, that won't be any different. Um, and she's said in other meetings that even if we don't find a grant that fits this particular project, we will find grants that will go toward spending of other areas that will help offset our overall bottom line.
The DCE, um.
Yes.
They, they have a very good grant, last year, I wish this would have happened, like a last year type thing?
Yeah.
Because they were giving up to 100 million dollars.
Yeah, and I had already forwarded that, that information to Rana probably about a month ago.
Yeah, I did have it last year, so we'll get to, and we just didn't have a project that was able to be utilized in that grant, and tried, and we're waiting for that grant to see if, if they come out with another one. This is a 2026 project.
It should be up to 5 million dollars, um, for projects, around what we're looking at, so.
The project has to be at least 500,000 dollars to even apply for it.
It hasn't got 20 million match or something like that.
Yeah.
But last year would have been perfect, they, still a lot, 1.2, is that correct?
It depends on what we settle at as the scope, but the pit is 11.2 max.
Hold on, I guess I have a question. This is on our agenda to vote on tonight, and we don't even have this votes up yet, so how are we even voting on it? Are we giving a blank, a blank agreement to go ahead and do whatever? So, then why are we voting on it if you're telling, if you're telling, the public the scope isn't even decided?
We can talk about that.
We can talk about it when we get to it.
Okay.
Anything else from the public?
If, I'm with the same woman here, Pam Pistello.
Could you please tell me your name?
Pam Pistello, Ship and Township.
Thank you.
I don't understand how you can go ahead with a project without knowing where you're gonna fund it and how much increase we could possibly get in our taxes.
That's right.
I don't understand that, I, I couldn't go and say, oh, I'm gonna buy this, but I don't know how I'm gonna pay for it, maybe I'll get a grant, maybe I won't, and then you're all gonna pay for it.
We have a bond that we are going to take out.
We still have to pay it back, we do. A million dollars a year, right?
As we've said in other meetings, we have at no time talked about raising taxes to support this.
Well, if you don't have the money, that's gonna be your only option. If you can't get all the grants, certainly this community, with at a million dollars a year, or whatever it is, even a half a million, you're gonna have to raise taxes.
Thank you.
Eric Faribault, Ship and Township, you guys need a second opinion and some transparency? That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, 1.6, board approval is requested on the minutes from the board meeting of June 23rd, 2025, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, uh, approved, or opposed? Motion carries. 1.7, the board will appoint a qualified elector to fill the vacant seat of Alexandria Gribble, the appointee shall hold that seat until the first Monday of December 2025. Interviews will be conducted at this time. So, the way we're going to do this, um, one of you will get interviewed and the other one will step out. And then we'll bring you in when it's your turn, and the other one will step out. Pardon?
Barry's not getting a question.
No, so, so they won't be, yeah, we, you won't be able to be sworn in tonight to vote on anything. He's on, yeah, Barry Brown is on vacation, so within 10 days of being appointed, you will need to go to the courthouse and get sworn in by the proponentary or somebody who's able to do that at the courthouse. Okay. So who wants to be first, Tony or Jim?
I'm closest to the door, I can leave. That's the question, I don't know if I'm coming back.
Okay, Jim's gonna go first, thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Up front here, please, in the hot seat. Okay, so you're going to be asked a question from that each of us have chosen, and we will take down your answers, and after you're both interviewed, we will reconvene and discuss public. So your first question is, why are you interested in serving on the board, and if elected, what will be your priorities?
Well, after tonight, I don't know why, anybody would want to be on this board. I, I've, I've wanted to serve on school boards for many, many years, but as my wife being a teacher, um, we decided it would be in our best interest, so, um, why I'd like to be on this board is, I, I've always given to my community when my children were younger, I volunteered for, for Little Lake, for, uh, Teener Lakes, girls softball, um, I was a wrestling coach here for a while, PIA official, um, and so on, there's, there's many, many things, so I've always been inactive with the, with the community, and, uh, I like to volunteer my time in something I feel is worthwhile. I have served on a board previous to this, I was in a borough council for eight years, so I know how hard it is to set aside your personal feelings on items, uh, and vote in an unbiased way in the best interest of the community. What my priority would be on this board is to ensure that the privileges that myself and my children had here, in the best interest of the community. That is a hard line to follow when you're talking about children and what's best for them, and also on the business side, what is financially responsible.
Okay, thank you. Number two, what do you believe is the greatest challenge about school board service?
Um, community approval, as it is here, it, it is a hard, I think it is a hard job. Yeah, it is volunteer, you're voted, there's no pay, there's no compensation, it takes a lot of time, and I commend everyone on this board that has, has done this. I, I really think it is, is community approval, and, uh, that's the hardest thing to do on this board.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Well, I do have an associate's degree in carpentry and construction, I got that from Triangle Tech, uh, a few years ago, so I, I do have a background in, uh, some construction stuff, you know, I don't know a lot about commercial, you know, I know some things, so I think I could bring that, um, I bring a level head, um, I try to see both sides and inform an opinion from that, and not just go with what I want, so.
Okay. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students in the district, what does this mean to you?
Uh, this means what this job is all about, it's, uh, that's why you get elected to this board, it's not a personal thing, it, sometimes you have to vote against what you want, or what your, your wife may want, or your neighbor may want, um, it's, um, the, the rule we had on Borough Council, and I, this is a quote from someone, a third of the people you're gonna make happy, a third of the people you're gonna make unhappy, and a third of the people really don't care. So that, that's, that's where you're at, no matter what you do, you're not gonna make everybody happy.
All right. All right. Uh, have you ever attended a school board meeting and what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board?
Um, I never have, I, I attended one that I remember, it had to do with the school pool, um, when they were trying to close it and what was going on there, I was just interested in what was gonna happen, um, because it has been something in our community for so many years, um, but that's the only, other than that, they're, they're, they're long meetings, usually I, I get up and go in, in, in work early in the mornings, and, I, I just, I just didn't have.
What do you see as the roles and responsibilities of a school board member?
Rules and responsibility?
Roles and responsibilities.
Roles and responsibilities? Um, I think your responsibility is to what is best for the children, for the students of this, of this facility, and, uh, what your role's playing in that is, I think, is up to individual, what you think your role is, um, with notes, I don't think there's any set policy that says, but I, I believe you should be proactive in what goes on in this school to improve it, if you see something, it should be, you should speak up and, and brought to light.
What issues do you believe this district needs to address in its academic program and offerings, and what changes would you recommend?
Well, that's a hard question. My children went through, and I saw some of the things that they struggled with when they got to college, um, I believe their struggles were more with math, our math program, but overall, they both did well. My daughter graduated from one of the top nursing schools in Pennsylvania in four years, my son graduated Penn State in four years, and had to switch majors in the middle, which is unheard of, anybody that's put a child through college to try to graduate in four years, switching majors in the middle. So that being said, apparently they did learn something, and the school was adequate for them to go on and succeed.
Do you have any changes that you'd recommend, or not?
Um, at, at this point, I, I don't see, you know, with, um, my wife being a teacher, I, I, I can't complain about anything, the way anything was run, or anything I saw that I heard of, that she had spoke of, or that I, I had heard otherwise.
And the last one, how do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
Oh. I, I just think you, you just need to keep in mind, you're here for the betterment of our community, which is the children, which is our younger generation. So every decision you make, I think, has to be, in the end, result has to be, it has to affect them in a positive manner.
Okay, you're on the hot seat.
Thanks, there's just some quick questions.
Want some, Tony? Please.
I stayed, I was thinking of leaving, but I stayed.
Okay, first question, why are you interested in serving on the school board, and if elected, what will your priorities be?
I think I could answer that question the same way, I'm interested in helping, and my priorities would be to just help in the best way possible to, uh, guide decisions that help educate our children.
All right, what do you believe is the greatest challenge about school board service?
The greatest challenge about any public service is, uh, dealing with your constituency in a, in a fair, honest manner. I think that was probably the main reason why I was elected to four terms as a county commissioner, I told people, they didn't always want to hear what I told them, but I told them the truth, and I think they respected me for that.
What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
I think I over-prepare for things, so I, I like to get as much information as I can before I make a decision, and then I make a decision, and then I move on, I don't do I want it, I don't rethink it, um, I just like to make any good, informed decision.
As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and district, what does this mean to you?
It's what I've done pretty much since 1992, I do what's best for my constituency.
Have you ever attended a school board meeting and what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board?
I have attended school board meetings, not in this century. I actually, you know, I'm not sure why, but I was the student council representative to the school board when I was in school, I know that's a long time ago, stop laughing, please. I just, I have a passion for public service, I don't know what it is, I enjoy it, I think I'm good at it. I enjoy it, I think I'm good at it.
What do you see as the roles and responsibilities of school board members?
Oversight of the school district. Not necessarily day to day, which is left to administration, but overall oversight, budgeting, finance, those kind of things.
What issues do you believe this district needs to address, address in its academic program and offerings? What changes would you recommend?
That's a hard question to answer, because I, I need to get more involved, um, do a little bit, uh, due diligence, see what's going on. What I know is that, again, going back a ways, we were the number one school district in the intermediate unit. I don't know why we couldn't be the number one school district in the intermediate unit again. Education to me is just the great equalizer, it makes all people from any socioeconomic class equal.
How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
I think probably by, uh, being prepared when they make decisions. Again, go back to just digging into, to information given to you. Understanding it, get questions about it, get your questions answered.
Okay, that's it?
That's it?
Yep. So if you would get Jim and bring him back in, and then legal delivery.
In front of us?
In front of you, yes, this is a public process. Okay, so everyone has heard their answer. I don't have anything to say.
I do, um, these questions are not easy, and being in that hot seat just a couple of months ago, I thought you guys both did very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone looking? Or either one over the other, more so? I guess we, Jim went first, um. How many of us are leaning towards Joe? Oh, we need to make a motion, I'm sorry. Who wants a motion?
No, I was just saying we need to make a motion.
Does anyone want to make a person a motion? Okay, in a second, all right. So do I have a motion for Jim? So, sorry. Anyone wanna make a motion? Vote for Jim.
I'll make a motion for Jim.
One second.
I'll second it.
Kelly. Does anyone wanna mo, make a motion for Tony?
I'll make a motion, okay.
We have a second for Tony.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? On our candidates?
I will say too, you guys both did a great job, we'd be lucky to have either one of you, I feel like.
Yeah.
I do too, I agree, I agree. I think you throw, bring a lot, um, you can bring a lot to this board to, um, fill in some gaps that we have. With both your backgrounds, I will personally say I would be honored to work with either one of you two. Tough decision. Yep, so we'll go around the table for Jim. Or do we wanna do them both? I have some, I, I say, okay. All right, so Marilyn?
Tony. Kelly.
Can I have a minute? Yep. Sheila. Tony. I'm gonna vote Jim.
Eric.
Kelly.
This is a terrible decision.
It is, I know, I know, it's hard, it's hard. Because I'd like to vote.
I know, I know, that's. I'm gonna go with Jim.
Kirsty?
Um, I think I'm gonna go with Jim.
Kelly?
I'm leaning towards Jim.
Is that what, do you wanna record your vote out now?
It's very hard.
It is.
But yeah, I think he was more thorough with his name first.
Okay. So.
That's cool.
We have a tie.
Honestly, I'll, I'll change.
Change?
Yeah, I mean, it really, it honestly does, I mean, I think they're both great, so it just went one way or another. Does anybody want out now, speak now, because.
Okay, so we have Tony, so with that said, Tony's got five votes, Jim's three. Tony, welcome to the school board.
Thank you.
So you're welcome to, come get your packet, and you can sit and listen, but we cannot take any votes tonight. You can ask questions. Yes, and Jim, you're on the call, we would love to have you. It was refreshing to get multiple candidates this time, because we don't always have that. Okay, continuing on, two point O personnel. Board approval is requested to accept with regret the resignation of Joe DiCio at the girls softball.